All right, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Here's the Republican Party stands by my foundation. Uh, in the business law of liberty and justice for all.
And we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shannon, here. Councilmember Mecha.
Present.
Councilmember Torren.
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Craig.
Here.
And we have a couple of presentations to give. For me. So, thank you. Supervisor Albi Cogan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the invitation to join me tonight for this very important reorganization meeting. I really appreciate you making space for me to just say a few words. On behalf of Santa Clara County, I just want to extend my gratitude to the entire city of Monte Serena for your continuing partnership and leadership. It's really been an honor for me to get to represent you as part of District Five on the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors. And tonight I had the privilege of recognizing your outgoing mayor, Mayor Burton Craig, for his dedicated service to the Monte Serena community. Mayor Craig, I really appreciate how you lead with integrity, vision, and a deep commitment to ensuring Monte Serena remains a vibrant and welcoming city and is heard in the entire county. Under your leadership, Monte Serena has strengthened its collaboration with the county on key regional priorities such as public safety and sustainability. I appreciate you came out. You've come out to our community heists as well as Councilmember Shannon, and I appreciate you joining us for that. Your guidance has been, your steady guidance, and I know that you've served for many years. We've served gosh, twenty, almost fifteen years ago. But I appreciate your steady leadership throughout the years and it will, it has left a lasting impact on the community. So, it's my pleasure to present the certificate of appreciation to you, Mayor.
This wall between us. Thank you so much.
I will not read it, but just appreciation for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Sure, you want to do a quick picture? That way, that way if you fight. Sure, we'll do it. Okay, our second presentation tonight will be from our Youth Commission. And Johann, I hear you've got a rousing presentation for us tonight.
Thank you.
Come on up. And we have other members of our Youth Commission here tonight. So make sure everybody gets introduced.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity today to present and give you an update on what the Youth Commission has done since the beginning of her term. First of all, my name is Johann Jacob, as many of you might know. I'm the Chair of the Monte Serena Youth Commission, and with me is...
Hi, my name's Arvita, and I'm the Vice Chair.
I'm Stella Zidler.
And I'm Jeremiah Stouch.
And today, we will be giving you our 2025 Fall Youth Commission update. First of all, I'd like to give some background on the Youth Commission. I know the City Council is very well aware of what the Youth Commission is and know they know, you guys know what we do, but I also want to make sure our members of our community also know what the Youth Commission is and what we do before we get started. So the Youth Commission is a group of students from eighth to twelfth grade who represent the youth of Monte Serena in the city. We have nine members, including all of us, and we meet once a month and organize numerous community engagement activities, which you'll hear more about today. If you remember, I last came to the City Council meeting in June and expressed my concern over the lack of forum in many of the Youth Commission meetings and how many of them were canceled due to a lack of forum. If I remember correctly, we only had about three to four meetings last year that were actually official, because the other ones were canceled due to a lack of forum. I'm very happy. First of all, I would like to thank the City Council for reviewing the the ordinance that establishes the Youth Commission and updating that last term for the Youth Commission in June. And I'm very happy to announce that this year we have not, or this term I should say, we have not canceled any Youth Commission meetings so far, and we've had forum to all of them. And I'd also like to give a big round of applause to our Youth Commission. They have been really engaged and really enthusiastic, and we're really on a great start as you hear about today. And now we'll go over our activities that we've done and events that we've had before, from the start of our term. We started our meeting, or we started our term with a meeting, a special meeting actually, where we discussed the city picnic and our plans for the city picnic, and Stella will be talking more about that.
So, we, the Youth Commissioners, ran a booth, and we all ran three booths. There was face painting, balloon animal making, and flinko, thanks to Mayor Craig, which is a game. And we really got to connect with more of the kids around Monte Serena, meeting them, seeing if they might be interested in joining Youth Commission someday. And we really just got to make it a fun time for all the kids.
And then next, we have Jeremiahus, who will talk to us about our Youth Commission podcast.
Hi, so hello, um. We've had like this idea of creating a podcast for a very while now. Uh, I think the, it first came up about also fall of twenty twenty-four, but we never really had enough people or quorum to really talk about it and to really express interest in actually creating it. This year, we're actually taking a few steps to go towards the podcast, and we even had a few meetings to talk about it, and we also recorded um, an interview with Mayor Craig. Um, as you can see there, yeah, um, so we have like a general outline of what we want to do this year. Due to it being a slow start than expected, um, we may have to cut down a few things, but our goal is to do at least two episodes of around ten minutes maximum by the end of this term, or well, this year. And then our future, our hope for the future is that this will be a very fun thing for all of the Youth Commissioner to do. And then this will continue on every year so far, so that we establish like a sense like that we have a voice that we are here too, right? Because yeah. I've had a long day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jeremiahus, for talking to us about the podcast, and I'd also like to thank Mayor Craig for all his help setting what you saw up there, and also thanks to K Cat, who actually loaned us their equipment for the actual podcast, and we're excited once we get them rolling out to be able to share with the Monte Serena community. Next, we'll be talking about the winter food drive, which our Vice Chair will talk more about.
Okay, so the winter food drive is already started. It's ongoing, and we do have some donations right over there. Um, but it's been a bit of a slow start, so by the way, this is totally an opportunity for anybody who wants to donate is right there. So, about it. And to advertise this, I went around downtown and I put up some flyers in different shops. Unfortunately, one of them had a car crash into it, so that's not great. Um, so, but, uh...
And our sign back?
I don't think I can really salvage it.
Probably not.
But yeah, that is ongoing, and we are hoping to get more donations. Hopefully it will pick up. I plan on donating by the end of this week. And, um, so that's kind of it for the food drive. You can drop off items. It's ongoing. Anything non-perishable would be awesome, and it's for a really good cause.
Thank you so much.
And now we'll have a preview of our upcoming events for the next, for December and the, and twenty twenty-six. So would you like to continue and talk about some of our upcoming events that we have planned?
Okay, so I'm sure everybody knows that this Saturday we have the Holiday Parade, which is one of our biggest events, I think, and most go to the ceremony in Monte Serena. Um, and for us, we, I believe we're getting a vintage Yosemite bus? Yes, a vintage Yosemite bus, and everybody will get on that, and that's going to be in the morning. And then we have, um, tried to plan Birdhouse Building. I know Mayor Craig's really excited about that. Um, he always brings a lot of enthusiasm to that subject, so unfortunately, I have not been able to contact the Birdhouse, the store, um, the lady at the store. I'm still working on that, but I think, um, Lucy, you were trying to reach out to her as well. Did you get anything?
So we are actually in communication with another organization, so it's just a matter of us putting a date and a number of seats that will be opening it up for our residents to participate in.
So it's running along really well, so that'll hopefully be happening soon. And, um, so that's going really well, and I think.
And lastly, for our upcoming activities that we planned so far, we will be holding our annual Ice Cream Social in May. As you might know, this Youth Commission holds an Ice Cream Social in May before the City Council meeting, hostess to our incorporation day, to celebrate our incorporation day, and also bring together the residents of Monte Serena. In the last two years, the attendance to this has actually increased, and many people got to know other people in the Monte Serena community, so it's really a great opportunity to connect. And we'd like to invite all of our community members to join the Ice Cream Social in May. The, there will be an email and flyers on the information when that is, and there'll be snacks and ice cream for everyone to enjoy. I know everyone likes some ice cream. So with that, I'd like to thank the City Council of Monte Serena for all of your help and support with the Youth Commission. It's really been a great opportunity to work in this organization, work with this organization, and I think we are on a great start this year. We're really enthusiastic on, we're working together as a team really well, and we've been able to plan all of these activities and events, as you just saw. And we've also been able to carry many of them out. So I'd like to also thank Mayor Craig for all of his support and continued support over the years with the Youth Commission. He's been at almost every Youth Commission meeting, and he always has great advice and input on all of our activities and events, and even just with running the meeting. And he's very knowledgeable from his experience in the Youth Commission for so many years. So I'd like to give a big thank you to Mayor Craig, and also I'd like to congratulate him on a successful complete, on a successful completion of his term as the Mayor of Monte Serena. Let's give him a round of applause. And after that, I'd also like to thank our city clerk, who spends a lot of the time behind the scenes writing our agendas and coordinating with all the Youth Commissioners to make sure our meetings happen and also our events and activities are going smoothly. So she does a lot of work behind the scenes to support the Youth Commission and obviously all the commissions and the City Council. So I'd like to thank her for that as well. And then lastly, I'd like to thank all the Youth Commissioners. I'd like to thank Jeremiahus, Stella, and Arvita for coming today. And I'd also like to thank the Youth Commissioners who weren't able to make it today, including Jackson, Jazz, Louis, Corinne, and Daniel. I'm, they're all, we're, we're all working together as a great team this year, and it's really, I'm really excited to be able to work with such a great team. And I think we have a lot in plan and a lot in store for the Monte Serena community. Now, at this point, once again, thank you so much to the City Council, to all the commis-, uh, City Council members, and our Mayor and Vice Mayor for all your support. Again, are there any questions from the Council regarding the Youth Commission update?
Thank you. All right, any questions from Council or comments? You guys do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank you all because your enthusiasm this year has been great and the the ability to increase the, the Youth Commission size over what we've had in previous years has been great, and I really look forward to a lot of great projects coming out from you, so thank you so much.
Yeah, and I just would like to thank you all for coming to speak to us. I'm really happy to hear that you're off to a great start and that you're able to have meetings. That's what our goal was when there was the issue with the forum. So I really appreciate you speaking to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for, for our guests.
How many years do you, do each of you have left on the Youth Commission? Because my daughter was on the Youth Commission, and it was, and my son, and seeing them go through, and I'm just curious as to how many years you've got until you graduate or turn.
I, this is, I'm a senior right now, so this is my last year on the Youth Commission. And let everyone speak for themselves, but we've had, actually this year, a wide variety of ranges, all the way from eighth grade to high school, so I think we'll have some people, hopefully, who'll be staying for even as long as five years.
Um, maybe not me, because I'm a junior, but I have one more year left, so.
I'm, uh, I just joined. I'm a freshman, so about four.
I, I'm a junior, so one more year after this year, of course.
Great.
Okay.
Any other question?
And, and are you going to be involved in recruiting coming up? I think this is very positive, because we want to keep it vibrant.
Yes, and trying.
Okay.
Just one, one question. So I'm so impressive, so impressive. I've, I've been to a, a meeting and just, just terrific. Is there anything that you think like that one thing that you'd like to do that is in the, is in, is in the plans going forwards?
Yeah, I, I mean, we have our, uh, we have a, actually a couple of activities that we have planned in addition to the ones we've talked about. The Birdhouse Building is pretty soft, but it's, it's still, I mean, we haven't set down a date, but we're working actively with an organization. Another activity idea we have is a movie night. We've decided to revisit this a little later because we want to do this ideally when the weather warms up a bit. And we were talking to our city staff and our mayor also about setting up a inflatable screen in the parking lot, and then having everyone join, all the residents join with chairs in the parking lot and watch a move, good movie. In addition to that, we'd also like to do some service projects. In previous years, we haven't been able to carry these service projects out just because of the forum issues. But hopefully this year, if we're able to get our events that we have done planned out, or we're planning out right now, and we're going on a good pace, we'd like to throw in some community service. I know in a previous year, we had a Keep Our City Pre-Dry, or not dry, but a trash cleanup, where we picked up trash, and I know, um, Councilmember Mecha helped with that. He took us and helped us pick up the trash along Winchester, but I know there are some safety concerns with that, but something along those lines would be really great, because that's our local community and picking up trash. I mean, trash is always, it's really sad to see trash just on the streets. You know, it's just going to end up in the drain or end up in some animal's mouth, so any trash that we can clean up would be ideal.
Um, in addition to that, I think for a brief moment, we were discussing that maybe in addition to the podcast, we could release like a series of videos where we spot like, like people and places in Monte Serena. I think we talked about having K Cat help maybe. Um, so I think that's another thing that we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Are there any questions?
Well, thank you so much for coming here tonight.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations on being there.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
And as our Youth Commission mentioned, uh, we have boxes over in our door, um, right here, and there's also a table that's in front of the council chambers, and food can be brought anytime throughout the day, and city staff will take care of it from there. Uh, the last day to bring food will be December the nineteenth, so this is a great time to clean out your pantry. I mean, get rid of all the cans and, and other non-perishable foods that you just don't think you're ever going to eat. Yes.
I think in the previous years, we also collected like jackets and toiletries. Um, are we willing to accept toiletries and jackets again?
Yeah.
We, we did in the past, but I think there was, what was the, um...
So they, um, they did express a, a more of a need for food, uh, yeah, than jackets. But, um, I know what toiletries you're speaking of, and those were fantastic. They loved those, and you still got them.
Great. Yeah, I still like to bring a bunch of toothbrushes and toothpaste over for them. They, they tend to, things like that are always in need also.
Can you please remind me, where does it get donated?
West Valley Community Services. Okay, all right, so then let's move on. Um, are we doing council reorganization now or is it item number nine?
Sorry, I forgot to move that, so yeah.
All right, so then I bring this to orders of the day. Are there any items that any council member would like to move around? Okay, seeing none then, I'm going to go to announcements, and Councilmember Mecha?
Yes, um, one of, one of the Youth Commissioners mentioned, uh, Los Gatos Coffee Roasting Company. And I've spent a lot of time there when I first moved to Los Gatos in nineteen ninety-five. So it's, and I can't believe what happened there on Thanksgiving Day. Uh, the only Thursday when no one would be there, and Lon, uh, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Lon Allen and I were there in that very seat that got completely taken out, so, um, you know, it's
It was just a couple of days prior, right?
Yeah, no, that, well, we, no, we were there a couple of months ago.
Oh.
Yeah, but I was there the day before. I was there on Wednesday, so it, it kind of shook, shook up our friend group and, and whatnot, but, uh, my, my heart goes out to, uh, Terry Hope and, and Los Gatos Coffee Roasting Company, so, um, I just wanted to, to recognize that, because that's part of our community.
It sure is, and they're going to rebuild, from what I've heard. It will be better, I'm sure.
Yeah, Councilmember Mecha and I are not going to have our coffee at Man Valley, so where it's not at the end of a, a street like that.
And we're going to get life insurance when you guys. All right, so that takes us now to oral communications. At this point, uh, anybody can come up to the podium and talk about any item you would like for up to three minutes, as long as it's not on the agenda. So, Council, former Councilmember Liz Lawler, are you going to come up and talk with us, or?
I'm sure, happy to.
I'm sorry. As you've got some pretty interesting tweets that I think the council would like to hear.
Sure, absolutely. Liz Lawler, former mayor. Um, I want, I would like the council to be aware of the Planned Bay Area twenty fifty latest draft EIR report, which is, um, based on, actually, it's not data-driven at all, and has made some very false assumptions and would create a lot of hardship for our community and every community in, in the Bay Area for that matter, in terms of addressing their housing needs. It would drastically inflate the RIN numbers, and, and not to mention the fact that it would create a very dangerous situation for our communities and communities like ours that are in a wildfire zone. So I would like council to, um, consider sending a letter of opposition on the draft EIR report. Um, the deadline is December eighteenth, and so it would need to be agendized for the next meeting. Um, this is obviously very, very important for us as we try to deal with onerous housing laws that make it very difficult for us to, uh, continue to not only enjoy our lifestyle, but provide the housing that we need without it being dangerous, but we need more pragmatic and thoughtful solutions, so.
Thank you so much. And as I mentioned to Liz earlier, uh, at the Mayor and Managers Meeting we had last week, that was probably the topic we talked about the longest, and so thank you very much. You just took care of my council member comments for tonight. Yeah. Any other, um, public comment? Do we have anybody online?
No answers.
Okay, very good. Then we will move to written communications. Do we have any written communications to make?
Nothing is coming.
Okay, so then that will bring us to the consent calendars, ca- calendar, items three and four. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Would any member of the public like to pull an item? Any seeing none, I'll open it for public comments. Nobody in chamber wishing to speak, so anybody online?
No answers.
Okay, Councilmember Mecha?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second?
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you so much. And so item number five is the adoption of the Health and Safety Element, and I think our city manager will give us a path report on this.
Yes, thank you. Um, we actually have our consultants from, um, M Group, Asher Cohen and Hannah Meeks are on Zoom, and, um, Asher will share the presentation on his screen and provide the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Hannah. Good evening, council members. As I mentioned, my name is Asher Cohen. I'm a council planner, and I'm I'll be presenting the Health and Safety Element tonight that's proposed for adoption. Uh, I'm going to present the staff recommendation first this evening, and then go over the background of the element and the community and stakeholder engagement that we performed. Then, um, I'll provide an overview of the changes that are in this draft that are made from the document views last saw the study session in June before discussing next steps. On the recommendation that we have for you tonight is to adopt a resolution that adopts the revised Health and Safety Element. So into the background, the Health and Safety Element is part of the broader general plan update that we're working on. Uh, there are several state-required general plan elements that we're showing here. The Health and Safety Element, following the format of Monte Serena's existing two thousand eight general plan, includes the required air quality, noise, and safety analyses. So early on in the general plan update process, we decided to revise the Health and Safety Element first in order to prioritize addressing wildfire evacuations and other safety concerns, and will continue to work on the other elements in twenty twenty-six, and this includes the new requirements for environmental justice. We've been working on this project for the better part of twenty twenty-five with documents that came out in the spring and summer before the study session that we held with council, but the Site Architectural Commission in June. And then in October, the Site and Architecture Commission reviewed a version of this adoption draft. Um, throughout this process, we've been doing outreach with the community and with other stakeholders. This includes surveys and newsletters, as well as direct outreach, including with a variety of state agencies with specific knowledge and expertise on safety issues. This has included tribal consultation done according to state law, which is ongoing. It also includes state mandated, state mandated, pardon me, CAL FIRE review. CAL FIRE, or the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, is required to review any safety element that includes land in state-designated very high fire hazard severity zones, which includes Monte Serena. Over the past few months, we've been working with CAL FIRE to make changes as recommended by their land use planning team. Um, they've informally approved the document. That's before you tonight, and the document will be presented by CAL FIRE's land use planning team to the Board of Forestry for their adoption next week. Um, in addition to being required by state law, CAL FIRE approval makes the city eligible for certain grants should the worst occur and Monte Serena be impacted by a wildfire. Um, going to the changes, we made several changes to the document since you saw it in June. Uh, these came from comments we received at that study session, comments from community members, and edits suggested by CAL FIRE uh, for it to be brought to the fire board, as I just discussed. All of these edits are provided as track changes and attachment to the staff report. They include revisions to the goals, policies, actions. Um, there's some minor revisions in the, in, in the part. Um, there's some minor revisions in the, in, in the, pardon me, uh, revisions in the introduction and additional maps and references in the wildland urban fires section. Um, there's also some minor clarifications defining new building in the seismic activity section, updated statistics in the slope instability section and an additional map in the subsidence liquefaction and other seismic hazards section. Um, there's additional minor edits in the flooding section and the hazardous materials section as well as some additional analysis and methodology that are provided in, uh, discussion of emergency response. Finally, there are some more minor edits in the noise and climate risk sections. Regarding the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, the project is exempt through both the common sense exemption and the act, actions by regulatory agencies for protection of the environment exemption. And no exceptions to these two exemptions apply here. As for next steps, uh, the project team is going to continue to work on the general plan update. There are several elements left to work on. We're going to continue working with, uh, state not, state and tribal interests. And in early twenty twenty-six, we plan to present the policy framework and public review draft to you all. I have a schedule that I'm sharing here. Uh, the green dashed rectangle is where we are now. And this shows what we're looking forward to doing in the upcoming year. So thank you very much for having us here and I'm looking forward to answering any questions that I can help with. I'll keep the, uh, screen on until requested otherwise.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we have council ask any questions, I'd like to open it up for public comment. And seeing nobody in chamber wishing to speak, do we have anybody online? Great. So then I will bring it back to council for, uh, questions of either staff or, or consultant. Anybody like to? Okay, um, so would anybody like to make a motion to adopt the safety element?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have, I do have a couple.
You do have a couple. Sure, go ahead.
And just small questions. One of them is that under the goals, policies and actions, item H S one point four, it talks about, um, access to gated, uh, gated emergency access roads that we will, um, have the ability to, you know, to get through those roads and who's gonna make sure that we have access to those gates? And do we know where all these gated roads might be?
Yes, um, so, yes, good question. To the first, who has access? The, um, county fire department has access. Um, and they're able to open those in case of an emergency. And the second, um, where are they? We have, um, yeah, we, apologies, I should pull up a map, but, um, we do have the map. Where are aware of them is the city and then of course the county fire is aware of them as well.
Okay, so it's not the city's responsibility to make sure that we always know where those gates are and that we have access to open those gates. County fire will do that.
Correct. Um, the, the new language, the insured gates can be opened. That's more of a, make sure there's not, um, there's no wall to cut them off for any sort of, you know, maintenance issue that would conflict with the county's ability to do that.
Okay, thank you. My other question was about the consultation with local tribes. What does that entail and, and do they have, did they have any feedback regarding our safety element?
Yeah, um, so the requirement is that we reach out and there is a, um, I'm gonna use the term registry. I think that's not a hundred percent. Uh, the Native American, um, Heritage Commission keeps a list of tribes that have, um, connections to certain areas. So we reach out to those tribes. It's a government-to-government process. It's something that, um, to be, um, a co, yeah, so some tribes responded to us and we're ongoing to, to thinking of how we can use this general plan process to, um, work with the tribes and think about, um, how some of the policy language can be, um, can reflect their interest. I realize it sounds like I'm being very broad. Um, to be honest, it's been, uh, very early going and there was nothing specifically on the safety element tonight. But it's something that's, uh, conversation is gonna continue through this general plan update process. And I don't know if they, um, yeah, it's, it's kind of almost like too soon to have more say, but we wanted to be able to say that this has begun.
Um, do we need to have some sort of, kind of sign off from this Native American Heritage Commission or association to complete this, um, health and safety element? It sounds like we don't have any sort of, sort of sign off.
No, we don't need any. So it wouldn't come from the commission. Um, there's, uh, the commission's responsibilities is, gives us, the city, the responsibility to reach out to the tribes. Um, but there's no, um, it's not like with the, with CAL FIRE where we're gonna send a document and they're gonna say, yes, this looks great or no, make these changes. It's more of, um, begin a consultative process, which we have begun.
Which, okay, so then which, which tribes does that, does that include for Monte Sereno?
Um, Dan, I'm not sure if the city is turning, uh, there's some sensitivity that we have to, uh, respect about naming tribes and naming those interests. Um, it's, it's a very sensitive aspect of state and tribal law that, um, again, I apologize for sounding vague, but it is something that just, uh, we're obligated to be sensitive there.
Okay, but, but again, it doesn't hold us up from moving forward with, with this. Okay, thank you.
Yes, council member Meckincheck. Um, I like the changes that are speaking to wildfires. And the one thing that I was looking at, looking for in H S dash four, um, on page sixty-one of one hundred and forty-one was something on household hazardous waste. And it just talks about hazardous materials. And in other jurisdictions, have you mentioned anything on household hazardous waste? Because I know that that is a significant issue in the extreme, uh, fire danger zone.
Mm-hmm. That's interesting. Um, we have not, um, seen anything specifically involving household management or involving fire. And I see my CAL FIRE reviewed this and they, uh, liked our approach to hazardous waste. So, um, I think a lot of that, you know, it isn't there is providing information, working with, um, you know, waste processing, waste services and.
Where, where, where I'm going is almost including another item in there and maybe that this ship has sailed, um, towards to the effect of that we would advocate and support, um, household hazardous waste mobile events where our residents could easily dispose of hazardous household waste. Something like that.
Versus taking it to the county directly?
Yeah, well, no one does that. That's the problem. That's why we've got a huge accumulation of this.
I think that's a very good point.
But could we include an item like that or has, is this too far down the line?
Um, I think there's a couple of approaches. There are, I'm gonna say three approaches there. Um, one is that, um, you know, we can do that tonight. We, um, can adopt and include that as something to be refined in the final adopted document. And we can wordsmith, think about how to wordsmith that language. Um, second, this will come back, uh, in the spring. Uh, we'll be adopting the rest of the general plan elements. We can bring this, um, so you know, we have all these and also if you recall on December second, we were thinking about this policy about household hazardous waste and here's where it is there. Um, so that's second. Or we can put, um, again, we started to think about the policy framework for the remainder of the elements. We can have that language in a separate element. Um, my thought personally, I think, um, because the focus of this is thinking about wildfire safety, um, evacuation, what you're talking about is, is valuable and to your point of is relevant to wildfire safety. But maybe it would make more sense to think about this change, uh, giving us a bit more time and thinking about the context of the rest of the changes in the spring. But we can absolutely approach it tonight if you prefer.
Well, let, let me ask the question real fast. So Santa Clara County itself does not have a mobile hazardous waste program. So how would we implement something like this? I, I don't think that.
We would advocate for it. We would advocate for it. And I'm sorry, but I'm the chair of Santa Clara County Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission. And I know where the holes are in their program. And, oh, Margaret's gone. I wanted to work with the county and, and start to get a program together so that we, these mobile events, but it crosses jurisdictions and it's difficult. It crosses jurisdictions and agencies.
Now, are you talking about just, um, recycling or hazardous recycling?
I'm talking about household hazardous waste.
Okay.
Pesticides, um, propane tanks, you know, all.
Well, I, I mean, I would definitely love it if something like this were, were to become available. I just wanted to make sure that putting this in the document, does that, does that mean that Monte Sereno is going to fund and make one of these things and, and, um, cause I can only imagine that the amount of red tape and money that it takes to make one of these happen is enormous.
The more successful it is, the more it costs.
There you go.
So you want to have a successful one or unsuccessful. But I, I don't mean to take us off track. I just noticed that gap. And I think Monte, the city of Monte Sereno would be providing leadership in the county by saying, in our general plan, we're addressing this and we want to address it. So more, it's more advocacy and, and helping to get more support for this across the jurisdictions and across agencies.
Okay, um, but should we, I'm, I'm just going to ask our city council, is putting this in our general plan advocacy or is it, is it something that we are not going to be able to?
Regan obligated ourselves.
Yeah, obligated. Thank you.
Typically, you would look at it in terms of a program. Um, and so there would be some level of obligation to complete that. I would suggest that the, the city work between now and the spring to figure out how we can incorporate the idea. We are a member of the, um, county household hazardous waste program. Um, this sounds like something in addition to that. So maybe give staff a little time to figure out where is the best place to put that in. And it may not be the general plan. It may be something else.
Okay.
And if I may, I just received, uh, a message from my colleague Hannah's associate tonight saying that she was actually researching this issue earlier today for placement in different programs. This will absolutely be coming up in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or we need a more comments? We need a motion, um, I'll ask our city attorney if she could wordsmith it, wordsmith it. Quick motion for us.
So.
Should we do it right the first time?
Um, that would just be a motion to approve, I think, the resolution number. Oh, sorry, backwards. Sorry. A motion to approve the resolution adopting the revised he- health and safety element.
I would like to make that motion.
Sorry. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item number six. Thank you. Uh, we are going to consider three applications and appointments to fill two vacancies on the Monte Sereno Site and Architecture Commission. And I think our city clerk will start us off with a staff report.
Yes. Uh, the site and architectural commission was established by the city council and has a responsibility to review and decide upon certain planning department land use applications. Provided recommendations to the city council on land use applications determined by the council and to review and provide recommendations to the city council on modifications to the zoning ordinance and the general plan. The ordinance establishing the commission specifies the commission consists of five members with each member serving the term of two years. Uh, the commission is currently, the commission currently has two open seats for the term, um, of January first, twenty twenty-six through, uh, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. So on October twenty-seventh, um, we sent out a notice for recruitment, um, for these two seats. It was posted on our website. We e-blasted, um, uh, the information. Um, and it was also posted on other cities' social media. We received three applications. Two applicants are incumbents. We have Donna Tam. We have Liz Lawler and we have a qualified resident, um, who also submitted, Avrin Jane. And I've also included in the staff report, uh, this is something new, but we just wanted to make sure we, we put it on there. And it's in the report that, uh, shows a little bit of all our commissioners just, um, so that you guys are aware of the participation with, um, their meetings. And that is all.
Okay.
And we, we have, um, our applicants here if you wish to, um, have them address.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I would like to start off by inviting each one of our applicants to come up and introduce themselves and say a little, um, give us, give us the element, the elevator pitch. We're gonna get three minutes to give us that. So that's what you'd like to start us off?
Yeah, Craig?
Yes.
I had a thought. I don't know if this is even possible or if I'm overstepping here, but I noticed that we have three applicants for this commission and we only have two applicants for Better Streets, but we have three openings. And I'm wondering if any of the three applicants would be interested in being on Better Streets, in which case we could feel, fill all our seats.
Well, we'll have to ask our city attorney about that one. What's, what's the rules of jumping commissions?
We, we need to submit an application and we did have a deadline in the application process, but what you could do is reopen the application process for Better Streets and we could continue it to the meeting December sixteenth.
So would it be?
That's not select.
Does, okay, but we can't ask if anybody would be interested in that.
You can always.
Oh.
Yeah.
Can, can you have applicants apply from the floor?
No, because we have a deadline.
Okay, okay. So, so we would have to, uh, have, move it to December, sixteenth.
You could appoint two and then strongly encourage the third to apply when the city clerk reopens the application process.
And we have enough time to do it by the sixteenth, by our next meeting?
Yeah, our, our recommended process is that we post for ten days. So it looks like it would be January sixth, be the soonest we can get to that.
But I like that idea.
I mean, I want to encourage involvement from our citizens and I hate to turn somebody away who, you know, wants to be involved. So.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, let's go ahead and start with, uh, Liz. Thank you again for applying.
Thank you. Um, former mayor Liz Lawler. I've also served on Better Streets Commission and currently serve on the site and architecture commission now. I was appointed in March and I absolutely love it. Um, apart from my family, serving our community is my number one priority. And I, as you all know, I'm very, uh, active with the fire, wildfire safety issues in our community. And my goal for site and architecture is to not only ensure that our community is safe um, from wildfire and with respect to evacuation routes and architecture, but also most importantly is that, given the amount of housing laws and how difficult, how onerous these housing laws are to preserve and protect our residents' right to enjoy their property. That's first and foremost, because we are truly in a very special place and I'm grateful every single day for having landed here twelve years ago. So I hope that you will consider my appointment and I hope to be appointed and approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and Donna? Thank you for applying again.
Sure, absolutely. Um, my name is Donna Tam and I've been a resident, um, in Monte Sereno for a little bit over four years. I've served on the site and architecture, um, board for the last one and a half years. Um, I feel just committed and just loyal to this community that I raised my young son in with my husband. And I just want to kind of protect and preserve, uh, what we have here, but also encourage, you know, development, uh, but just ensure. Uh but just ensure, you know, community safety. Um and I I feel. I just really compelled to continue to invest some of my time uh within this space or this community. And you know, otherwise, I'm very committed obviously to my family and um. Uh my husband and I, we've created a um a foundation um on behalf of my son, uh that's called the Connor Connor uh Connor Gable Foundation. We're just giving back to uh Stanford Children's Health. Um so we just feel that um this is our calling, just to give back to the community in general.
Thank you so much. And is uh Mr. Jane online?
No, I don't see him on the or.
Okay.
We just notified you once we submitted his application. I did notify him that, you know, um we would be holding a meeting today.
Okay.
To review, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Uh at this point, I would like to open it up for public comment. Would anybody in in chamber like to comment on the application process? Do we have anybody online?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, so I will bring it back to council and I would be looking for a nomination or a question for either of the applicants. Yes.
Um, I think we know two of the three applicants quite well and the third applicant is not attending. So I would like to uh nominate uh both uh Liz um. And uh Donna to continue the community involvement. And I'd also separately like to en- encourage the other applicant to apply for the vacant spot as pointed out by council member Shannon.
I would second that nomination and also that recommendation. That needs a second.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to have a vote please, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations, Liz and Donna. Enjoy another exciting term.
Well, they're gonna have an exciting time tomorrow with SB ten.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. That is, you're gonna earn your paychecks tomorrow night.
Yeah, let's not scare them off here. Why they're coming out tomorrow?
They've already seen the agenda.
Their their agendas are most of the time larger than ours, so again, thank you because this is a a thankless but. Most important job in our city. It's it's great that we have folks like you that are committed to doing this, so. Okay, so we have uh staying on a theme of commissions, we have two applications to fill. Three vacancies on the Monte Serena Better Streets Commission. I'd ask Liz to come up and give us a. A promo for the Better Streets, but. I've called her too many times in age. So uh Guisey, can we have a staff report on this, please?
Yeah, so on October seventeenth twenty please uh seventeen, the city council took action. To form the Better Streets Commission for the purpose of advising the city manager on design operations. And maintenance of the city's street system and and identifying and advising on in integrated. Coordinated environmentally uh sustainable and economically efficient street rehabilitation solutions. That address the multiple street systems demands such as underground utilities, uh street trees. Uh stormwater management and contamination runoff issues. The ordinance establishing the commission specifies that the commission consists of five members of the public selected by the majority of the city council. Um today, so uh the commission also currently has three open seats. Uh for the term of January first twenty twenty six through December thirty first twenty twenty seven. Uh this mission's uh notice of recruitment was also uh posted on October twenty seventh of this uh year. And we also posted on our city website, we e-blasted and we used other uh forms of social media. Uh we only received two applications and we have listed here Genevieve uh Duflough and Paige Craig. And so we are still with one seat available and I believe we have one of the two applicants uh here today.
Great, so I would like to invite any of the applicants here to come up there and introduce themselves to the city council. Full disclosure, this is my daughter. So I'll just kind of hold my head down. I mean, can I contact her or anything?
Paige, I'm a recent graduate from American University and also former youth commission chair. I spent my time as an undergraduate in two research labs. I did an urban stream geochemistry lab. And a microplastics lab that specifically analyzed the stormwater runoff in the Anacostia watershed in DC, back in DC. And I hold a bachelor's degree in math and environmental science. So I feel like my background kind of complements what the commission is looking for.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, any questions for our, and by the way, Genevieve, did she um sign in tonight? Is she online?
No, she didn't let me know, you know, she was gonna be here, but she was also notified that her application would be.
All right, thank you. So do we have any questions for our?
Just a comment, I think maybe you should run for the US Senate or something.
Yes, council member Shannon.
I just want to know, did your father recruit you for this? Sorry, did our mayor recruit you?
No, I saw it by myself, actually. I saw your email at last.
I'm a nice guy that you read emails too.
Yeah, some of them still do. Although I can't email them anymore, I have to text. Test, yeah, I do. All right, council member Beckencheck.
Um I noticed your background and interest in water. I'm on uh the. Um West Valley Stormwater Authority and have you ever considered attending one of their meetings? And understanding what they're what they're doing?
Yeah, certainly. I would definitely be open to that.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so at this time, I would thank you very much for coming up and speaking with us and um. I will then bring it back to council for any comments, discussion or motions.
Uh I'd like to just make a comment that's really just delightful to see. Um a young person wanting to get involved in, you know, their local community. I know Genevieve Duflough, the other applicant, um had applied to fill one of the vacant seats on council. And she's coming back in another way to try to get involved and that just really makes me very happy to see that.
Yes.
So thank you um to you Paige for applying and to Genevieve um for applying as well.
Yeah, oh, we should have uh told the rest of the youth commission while they were here. This is your stepping stone to great. All right, so uh would anybody like to bring a motion forward, council member Beckencheck?
I'd like to make a motion to uh appoint both of them to the Better Streets Commission.
Okay, thank you. And we have a second. And as one of the members is part of my family, I'm going to abstain from this. But I will call for a vote, all in favor?
Yes.
We have four, no nays and one abstain, correct? All right, thank you very much and congratulations for being on our Better Streets Commission. And um. You know, there's gonna be a lot of pressure on you to get rid of those green cones on Winchester.
You can put up a Monte Serena sign along the way.
We 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 do need a sign on Winchester that says welcome to Monte Serena. And and talk to that man who's sitting right in front of you because he tried for almost eight years. To get that sign put up.
If if Brian had been here as a city manager at that time, we would have that sign.
So, yeah, or if Walter was here, we would have had a monolith. I'm not, I'm not sure which one we would prefer to have.
Well, Walter, it would have been dispensing our game.
All right, so that takes us to item number eight, which is the introduction and waiver, so first reading of ordinance NS two forty nine. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Monte Serena amending section nine dot zero seven dot zero three five. And we're gonna talk about mechanical blowers and I had to read the whole thing. I'm trying to stretch out this mayor's. All right, so uh who's going to give the staff report on this one?
Um I will, thank you. In October twenty twenty three, the city council adopted an ordinance which prohibits the use of gas powered leaf blowers in Monte Serena. The ordinance was effective in January of twenty twenty four, however, the city council directed staff to delay enforcement of this new requirement until January of twenty twenty six. The delayed enforcement was designed to provide sufficient time for staff to inform the community of the new requirements. And for residents to transition to electric leaf blowers. The wording of the current ordinance prohibits any person from operating a gas powered leaf blower. As staff has been working to develop a code enforcement plan, it was realized that the current language would would require staff to notify and enforce the prohibition. On the person operating the gas powered leaf blower. Um which is problematic for code enforcement purposes as staff would not typically be able to respond to a complaint. Um in a timely fashion while the operator is still on site. And uh we wouldn't have any method of reaching out to the landscape or gardener's um business. If we didn't know who they were. So the proposed revised language would clarify that the property owner. And the operator are both responsible for complying with this ordinance, um which is the case for all other code enforcement issues. Staff recommends that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of the draft ordinance. And that concludes the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff?
Um can you talk a little bit about uh whether or not citizens have had issues with the gas blowers? And if there have been complaints and um sort of some feedback on what's been going on with that?
So we have um provided several notices um of the the um ordinance. The prohibition on the gas powered leaf blowers um through articles in our Eastall Mountain Monitor newsletter. As well as social media posts and emails um to a list of interest interested parties that we have. We have received um over the past two years. I would say perhaps a dozen or so complaints altogether about the operation of a gas powered leaf blower. We do also receive oftentimes when we put out information about the prohibition of the gas powered leaf blowers. We do also receive feedback of from other residents who are not in favor of the prohibition. And so, you know, just explain that that it's already been approved. Um but that the enforcement has been delayed until January. During this past few weeks, we've been trying to get the word out to the community and following up. Um on the complaints that we have received, just letting the owners know that this will be coming in the future.
And letting them know via a letter?
Um a letter or our code enforcement officer will go out to the property and knock on the door and just let them know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, council member.
I'll I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, it seemed like when we passed this. Act in twenty twenty four, it would take forever to get implemented and all of a sudden now here it is. And it if we, it was a high profile item back then for several of us and. I hear a blower going. Every once in a while and I just sit there and I grit my teeth. Um and one of the things regarding noise is that. Our city is so intertwined with the town of Los Catos. That you can have one house that's Los Catos and next door.
It's true.
Across the street is is Monte Serena. And noise doesn't follow jurisdictions as do wildfires don't follow jurisdictions. So I think truly get up with what is. Has Los Catos has is better for both communities. So I'm pleased to see this and uh and I like the revised wording, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'll also second when we uh when we passed this a couple of years ago, it seemed like. We would never see the time it was actually going to come and and it's here, this seems like this, like you said, just a few meetings ago and. And here we are, we're actually going to uh install this into our city and it's been, it's been discussed many times. But never successfully implemented, so yes.
I was curious, why did it take so long?
Because there was no support for it early. And and when I say earlier, I'm talking about like. During my my first time on the council between two thousand ten and two thousand eighteen. There was just never any support for it. The residents didn't feel that it's that it was necessary and the council wasn't ready to support it yet.
I I'd like to make a comment. Um the other thing is the technology has really changed with batteries and it used to be. You'd have a uh a battery operated device and it just didn't have the. You know, you'd have to change the batteries, there was the cost of it and, you know, now the batteries go across different. Devices and it's become more feasible and cost effective and they're more powerful now.
Yes.
So.
And I was just gonna say also, state law was passed that prohibited the sale of um gas operated blowers, so. You can't buy them anymore, so that was also.
Yeah. And in fact, there's been many buyback programs that are sponsored by some of the different air quality agencies. And uh I know we did one for, we the county San Santa Clara did one through rebate. So you could go to Home Depot and and get some pretty good rebates on gee battery operated blowers. But it's also interesting because now that we're sort of getting in line with some of the other cities, I've been reading articles about. How people are like, what? Wait a minute, really? We did this? This is gonna happen now and? And what about this and what about that? So uh I think we're gonna probably probably be taking a few lumps like everybody else, but. I I don't anticipate this is gonna be too bad. It's, most of the people I talked to, as as you mentioned, uh are are very uh. Very supportive of it and they definitely grit their teeth when they hear that gas motor start up. So uh at this point, I would be looking for a motion. Oh, yes, you're right. Um I'd like to open this for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Ena, you're leaning out. Oh, okay. Better watch it, I'll call it and I'll heartbeat it. You're just scratching your nose, man. All right. Anybody online?
Uh no hands are raised.
Tell you, I'm stretching this out as long as I can.
But if you're ready for a motion.
I would love a motion.
So move.
Okay, second. Thank you. All in favor?
I.
And it is done. Oh, do we have to take a roll call in? It's this though. Okay, so with that, we were are going to have a time honored tradition in Monte Serena, which is a council reorganization. And at this point, um I'd like to give a few remarks before we move on to. Um the passing of the torch or the passing of the gavel, as they say. Ooh, look, there's the gavel right there.
It's about to be passed after the remarks.
All right, so let me switch over here and I wrote this beautiful tear jerking. Um. Closing remarks. Then I went into chat GPT and I said, write this in the style of Don Rickles. And it was really good. But if you want to hear it, you'll have to come see me afterward, because probably I couldn't say everything that it came out with. So you're gonna get my version of it. So, good evening to my colleagues, all my friends that are here, neighbors. As my year as mayor ends, I just wanted to reflect on what we've accomplished this year. This wasn't the work of one person like me. It was the result of a dedicated and thoughtful collaborative city council. Supported by outstanding city staff. And I just wanted to talk about some of the milestones that we had this year. We hired a new city manager. Diana, thank you so much for filling in just excellently. I'm gonna make up a word there. And um you've brought vision and stability and leadership to to the city. We have a new contract with the Los Catos Monte Serena Police Department, ensuring continued safety for all of our residents. I know it's very comforting to pick up the phone and dial three five four eighty six hundred. And within about five minutes, a black and white will be rolling up to your house. We welcome two new council members adding fresh respect to our work and our energy, so, you know. Welcome Ken and Lon. And we implemented a modern accounting system to improve our transparency and efficiency. And our ability to really create a more open government and kudos go out to council members Beckencheck and Shannon. And again, our our city manager who had been working tired, tired, tired of the sleep. Um to really put this whole thing together. And then I just have to mention our city picnic, which was one of the best ever, one of the largest ones ever. Because it was a true celebration of community spirit. We've also taken steps to strengthen public safety. We installed twenty flock cameras throughout the city. And these cameras will help law enforcement quickly identify vehicles that are linked with crimes, deter criminal activity. And provide real time alerts. deter criminal activity, and provide real-time alerts to help keep our neighborhoods safe. So there are now twenty of them, around, it's actually eighteen, then we have two portable ones that we're able to put anywhere we need around the city. And looking ahead, we are addressing the need to uh increase or keep the the level of safety that we have in our community. Uh, we are going to be working on a parcel tax that will continue to fund police services as this is essential to maintain the excellent service that we receive from the Los Catos Monte Serena Police Department. We've upgraded our building codes to make it easier to build small structures like sheds and trellises and other small structures. And this will make it easier and cheaper for residents to improve their homes, thus improving their quality of life. We started some important projects like fire prevention as we uh solve the devastation that happened earlier this year. Uh, we don't want that to happen here in Monte Serena. And everybody from the state all the way down to the city level is committed to making sure nothing like that ever happens here. So we've had numerous meetings. I want to thank council member, uh I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Allen, who's and I think Councilmember uh Torin, you've been attending the kind of the overall Monte Serena Los Catos Fire Prevention Meeting. So and I think uh Liz, you've been attending those too, haven't you? Been to a couple of those?
To the best of my my ability, yeah.
And I know Allison, so our community's been very involved in that. And I think that's, again, just kind of showing our our commitment to making the making this happen. And um so we are going to continue working on getting the trees on Highway Nine removed. As anybody who saw our meeting, uh our last meeting with our our state assembly person, Gail Pellerin, she actually mentioned those trees and how she was gonna continue working with us to to make that a reality. And uh so those are projects that we started and we closed some, like after twenty years, we finally settled the lawsuit that had been a burden on our city. And I am so happy that that is done. So every meeting this year was marked by civility, productivity, and harmony. Our relationship with the city staff has never been stronger. And the collaboration that we have established is the foundation of everything that we've achieved. I especially want to thank the city staff for the excellent work that they have done this year. You made my time as the mayor easier than it should have been, and your professionalism and dedication has been invaluable. As I look ahead, I'm excited to celebrate the holidays with everybody who will be here. I know some of us are traveling. And we're gonna be aboard the historic Yellowstone tour bus provided by Mr. Varney. And uh it's kind of a symbol of Monte Serena itself as it was in a devastating accident and it was totaled. Who they weren't even sure, he wasn't even sure if he'd be able to put it all back together. Um, but it was rebuilt and restored. And just like our city does, when we have a challenge, uh we will rebuild and we will make it better and stronger than it was before. As the saying goes, alone alone we can do so little, together we can do so much. And this year proved that when we work as a team, there is no challenge that we cannot overcome. So thank you very much for trusting me to serve as your mayor this year. It has been an honor and a privilege, and it adheres to a bright city, a bright future for our city. Thank you very much.
Burton has done the mayoral hat trick. This is the third time that he's served as mayor. Uh, Burton and I first worked together in the council, I think, back in twenty fourteen. I think we both had jet black hair then. But anyway, uh each time you do it, you get better. And uh he really brings collegiality and the core to the meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Juan. And now I have the honor, as Juan said, we officially served back in twenty fourteen. And so I have the honor of nominating him to be our next mayor of Monte Serena. So I would like to get a second on that, please. Thank you very much. And all in favor of Juan Allen being our next mayor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
No, you gotta say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I always say yes.
I know, that's mine.
I will say aye.
And my congratulations, Juan. Don't worry, you get that.
And.
You get this.
And you get
this.
Okay, uh then you get to pass that on. And my first job as mayor is to nominate Lisa Shannon to be uh Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I second that. All in favor? Aye.
Yes, aye.
Okay.
We'll now proceed with uh committee commission reports. Councilmember Mecklenburg, do you want to start? And you're in.
Um, one of the joys of being in this seat. Um, yes, so the VTA meeting is canceled as it is too many times. Um, so I don't have anything to report there, but I am looking forward to the future uh when we've got a city um engineer, because I, as I've said before, there's money to be had uh grants for our our roads um at the VTA level. Uh, West Valley Stormwater Authority, we only meet every three months, so there's basically nothing to report there. Uh, as with West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority, Silicon Valley Clean Energy is meeting on the Wednesday, I believe it's the tenth. So I'll be able to report back on that. And that's, we're gonna go into a hiatus for uh the month of December after that. So it'll be a a shorter meeting. Uh, Santa Clara County Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission, we are meeting in January. We meet every two months and in even numbered months. And December is an even numbered month, but we're having a meeting in January to keep things rolling there. Uh, those are our reports.
All right.
Yes, I did not attend uh any city association meetings, but I did express interest to the mayor that I would would like to serve on the SVAC.
SVAC?
SVAC, yes.
Yes, so that's uh so that's an interesting one.
Can I take that? Then you, your mayor said that he needs to step off. Did you see that?
I I understand.
Or Mayor Craig?
I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Shannon.
Um, so Santa Clara Valley Water did not meet. They they only meet quarterly. And then I feel like I keep saying the same thing over again about West Valley Sanitation District. We're hiring a new district manager. But tomorrow is a full day of interviews. Um, the next day will be a half-day of interviews for the final candidates. So I hope that the next meeting that I come to, we will have hired a new district manager. Um, it's been a, it's, you know, it's a long process when you're looking for someone uh to fill a role like that. Um, I think we've had a good recruiter that has done a good job bringing us some, you know, strong candidates. Um, and I look forward to the interview process and selecting somebody who can serve the sanitation district well.
Okay. Well, my report is that SVAC did meet last week and we renewed the contract of our executive director. Uh, SVAC, as you may know, is basically a no-kill shelter. I was on the board ten or twelve years ago. They do a wonderful job. Mary and I have been opting some bets from there. And uh it's 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 a joint powers authority that has been very successful.
Okay, uh council member comments. We'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
Oh, good. I'll get to start. Um, of course, I absolutely want to thank our mayor, Mayor Craig. This has been my first year on council, and so I've been, you know, watching you and um I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate how you've run the meetings very well and you keep things moving. Um, I've learned a lot from you, so thank you for this and thank you for your, I made a little notation, many years of service. And I I guess forgotten or didn't remember that you had three times as mayor and so many, many years on council and serving this community. I know all the work that you do with the youth commission is appreciated. I mean, to have these kids appear here tonight and talk to us and talk and seem excited about what they're working on. And they have several projects. I know that you nurture a lot of that in them. Um, so thank you for all the work you do with Youth Commission. Um, and just thank you for uh your leadership for all of us.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to working with you, continuing next year for a steering.
Definitely. Former Mayor Craig, comments?
I I don't have any comments right now, but thank you all very much for being a great council to work with this year.
Councilmember Tori?
Well, I know Burton because we serve on the KCAT board, so I I that's where I know you. Um, but it's been a real pleasure to uh be on this. Uh, as a council member, uh I'm learning a lot from you, uh watching you in action as I have did in the last couple of meetings.
Now you know why some things a KCAT run the way they do.
I, and I and I have to say that in in, you know, in working with Burton from a, you know, on the KCAT side, he always has the answer. There's never, there's never a question or a challenge or anything that passes him by. He always has the answer. More often than not, it's right. Uh, and so it's really been a pleasure to um to work with you in 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 community service because that's that's who you are. You do, you do a lot more than just the mayor. You're involved with so many different things. And uh it's really very impressive and a pleasure to work with you and know you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mecklenburg?
Um, my comments, so I will echo the comments that the other council members have made. Thank you for your service. Um, and I'm gonna kind of pivot a little bit and uh ask if we could former formally invite our Citizen of the Year to attend the parade with us in the bus, if there's would be a seat.
I did send him a message.
Okay.
And so I hope he will be attending. I haven't heard back from him yet, but I'm gonna reach out to him again probably tomorrow and make sure that he knows he has an invite on the bus.
Okay.
And and by the way, just to um, um if anybody would like to invite a family member or a friend to ride on the bus, we'll we'll have we'll have some space. I'll be bringing my, how old is Nico?
Uh, he's ten.
Ten, so my ten-year-old nephew and his friend Lucas will be riding on the bus. They they are Los Catos residents. There will be donuts back in there. I've also invited um the former mayors to ride on the bus with us, so um should be uh should be a fun time.
I regret to say I won't be riding on the bus, but I will be watching the video.
You're gonna be wearing shorts and sitting on.
It's speaking Spanish.
Oh, yeah. He's headed south.
And I will be broadcasting, as I do every year, the KCAT parade with John Lottner, who is uh most of you know, has been so involved in the community for so many years. So I will make sure to give a very special shout-out to our friends from Monte Serena going by.
You just want one of the donuts, Ken.
Yeah. Well, sure, you would donut. See, you're not allowed to throw things into the. That wouldn't be a good idea. Brian, did you have any more of comments?
Uh, no. Well, I have two comments. Uh, uh, number one, I want to uh thank my colleague Chuck Page for being here. And I'll probably go over to Saratoga when Chuck is inaugurated as mayor there. Uh, he and I are working together to get the uh uh trees off of Nine because they're really just in Saratoga, Monte Serena, who none is in uh Los Catos, and we're working together on that. And then lastly, just a personal comment, uh I think I said before, your wishes and prayers have been successful. My wife is now cancer-free, and so it's really appreciated.
Uh, Madam City Manager, City Manager's report.
Thank you. I just have one comment um today, um just to let the council and the community know that City Hall will be closed starting on Wednesday, December twenty-fourth through um January first and reopening on January second. So, get in before the twenty-fourth, bring in business. And that was all I had.
Okay, future agenda items, I thought we had a one we're gonna.
Yeah, I've got two items that I'd like to see.
Please, go ahead.
Um, first of all, uh putting an alternate in for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, if we could put that on the agenda and and notice it. This.
So the um committee commission assignments will be in January. And at that meeting, the council will discuss who would, who's appropriate to be.
I think he's talking about the Terry Resolution.
That's right.
So that'll be, that'll be all coming forward in January.
Well, I I guess where I'm coming from is I would like to see us move forward somewhat expeditiously on that rather than just keep pushing it out, you know, so.
Um, I have a, I have a question. Did did we determine that it has, that it doesn't necessarily have to be a member of council?
Just for that one, that's the only one where we could do it. And so, and I I thought the sense was, in fact, I thought we passed a resolution saying we were going to do it. Three years, my memory fading, failing me.
So I think as as I recall, the direction that was provided, um it was two meetings ago when um council was looking at the policy that describes this is, so the direction provided was that um assignments would be made amongst the council members. And if there was not a council member to fill that alternate seat for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, then council could direct staff to open it for the public.
Okay, but going to the uh point, is there um Madam City Attorney, is is there a reason to do this January sixth, not in two weeks to kind of get this going?
That's just the standard time that the city council does the appointments.
Okay, um.
My my comment is that uh by everyone else appointing their their uh alternate, we should be able to appoint ours. So it's just, you know, we seem to be uh spending a lot of time on this.
Well, but let me ask the City Attorney, could we um, the next agenda, just appoint the alternate for that one thing and do everything else in January?
We currently have an alternate. I think it's you.
Well, I think you're an alternate. Please, uh, now I'm stepping off, I could step off SVAC, I could step off that. I'd be very pleased to have that on the agenda for December so we could, uh so Brian could have an alternate uh for it.
Right, so what we would have to do is get direction from the council to, at the last, the last direction we got was fill the commission committee appointments as we do. And Boise's telling me we can do that at the next meeting in December. And then if a council member is not interested in being an alternate, then you would provide direction to staff on how to advertise for that position to members of the public.
That sounds very complicated. Uh, so I'm not sure, are we ending up that we're gonna do this in two weeks or we're gonna do this in January? Where are we ending up, Madam?
I think if you are ready to make appointments, then we can buy the, well.
No, the the.
No, but we need it in the agenda packet. So if you can make your appointments, then it can be on the agenda.
Well, may I suggest that?
Well, well, let me just say that one of the joys of being mayor is that you will be meeting with our city attorney tomorrow at ten o'clock to set the future agenda item.
Okay, and may I suggest that if my colleagues will each send in to the city manager what uh where they'd like to be the representative and where they'd like to be the alternate, uh then we could look and see if there's overlap and so that we could people before the next council meeting. Perfect. Um, do we need a resolution for that or is that just informal?
When it comes back, it'll just be informal.
Informal. So please, everybody, uh let Diana know where you'd like to be the representative, where you'd like to be the alternate. And uh if there's any overlap, we'll we'll beat it and sort it out so that everybody's comfortable, okay?
Anything else that anybody wants to bring up this evening?
Oh, there's one other future agenda item. One of the things that uh the Ad hoc Committee has found is that we issue checks for uh utilities. And what we'd like to do is propose that we move to automated payments. But what you would see today on the warrant list, if it went to automated payments, you wouldn't see it. So we'd like to have a policy coming forth to council on that for full transparency. So that's a future agenda item that we've.
I'll let you, the Ad hoc Committee, decide if you're prepared to do that in December or want to do it in January. I'm comfortable either way. Okay? Anything else?
Sure.